Pledge, please.
They're rising to the pledge.
Mr. Kelly, can you lead us in the pledge?
Yes.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have a moment of silence for the men and women in the armed forces? Thank you. I'd like to call this public hearing to order. And a notice of the public hearing. Town of New Milford, notice of public hearing. Please take notice that pursuant to sections 405, 406 of the town charter. The New Milford Town Council holds a public hearing. Your public comment relating to the following proposed ordinance. New chapter fifteen, article two, food vending trucks. It is proposed that the ordinance be added to the New Milford Code of Ordinances as authorized said charter sections 405, 406, chapter ninety-eight of the general statutes. Said public hearing to be held in the E. Paul Martin Room at New Milford Town Hall, ten Main Street, six forty-five P. M., July twenty-second, twenty nineteen. Copy of the proposed ordinance is on file in the town's clerk office and available for examination, dated at New Milford this ninth day of July, twenty nineteen, and it appeared in the News Times, seven fifteen, twenty nineteen. We also have the warning here as well that will give to Elaine for the minutes and Attorney DeBella. Do we have anything on the ordinance, sir?
I can give some guidance on the ordinance. The ordinance is substantially different than was originally, um... The ordinance is substantially different than what was presented in the new public hearing. Thus, we had to do a new public hearing because of the charter reads that if there's a substantial change in anything that's proposed at a public hearing, it has to have an order. So, the changes that were made were substantial enough such that a new public hearing is required. The ordinance is called a food vendor ordinance for food trucks, and it relates to the use of food trucks or employment of food trucks on private property. It was promulgated and suggested by the Director of Economic Development, Karen Pollard. She and I worked on it in order to draft it so it would conform to what we believe is the community standard. And at this point, the only differences between the July eighth and now is that there's one truck allowed only per property. There will only be twenty permits issued per month at a fee. And that's going to be, they have to be signed up by the mayor, by the chief of police, by the director of health, and by the fire marshal. And of course, the director, the health director and the fire marshal have to do inspections for safety purposes. The enforcement provision is pretty straightforward. There can't be any garbage that's permanently used there. You can't leave a garbage can there. The truck has to be removed. It cannot be stored there. And it has to be, of course, mobile, registered in the state of Connecticut or in the state of Oregon. And any trailer has to be enclosed in a roof trailer. It can't be a hot dog cart that's trailer. So, the reality is that this is going to be kind of limited to a particular type of vehicle. It's going to be limited in space and in time. It has to be at least two hundred and fifty feet from a premises that serves food or fish premises. That is a brick and mortar premise. And it will be enforced by the New Milford Police Department. With that, I think that's probably substantially the difference changing.
Thank you, Randy.
Attorney DeBella, I have just a clarification. If you would, it came up in the past. The two hundred and fifty feet from the entry point of the brick and mortar or the property line?
It's two hundred and fifty feet from the corner of the premises in which the brick and mortar store is located.
The corner of the structure.
That premises, yes, of the structure that is the brick and mortar.
I understand.
So, if it's one of fifteen units, it's the boundaries of that unit.
Thank you.
Do we have any from the public that would like to talk at our public hearing? Do we have anyone?
Is that what that signing sheet was for?
Signing sheets for town council.
Can you ask me any question? This is like a general, uh... I'm Ted Zloski, and I do have a food vendor truck right now, okay? And the way I understand how all this worked is everything was set up in the winter, went out to bid. I bid, got my property, okay? So, I'm at Con's Pond, and now all of a sudden, there's other food trucks coming in, and I'm not really too happy about the whole situation. So, that's just, that's my aggravation about the whole thing. But if this goes forward, I need to know what my options are as far as what I can do and what I can't do with my business that I spent thousands of dollars setting up.
Randy?
You're a grandfather.
Right, but can I, now, if I decide I want to go somewhere else, does my permit or do I have to pay extra to go? Because I have people stopping in once a week. Hey, can you come and do this? Can you come and do that?
Let me explain how it works. If you're going to go elsewhere, and it qualifies as a food truck, okay? Then what you'd have to do is you'd have to get the owner of the premises, private property, like a shotting or something, and a host to want you there.
Okay.
And then you'd be able, you'd have to get a permit, like you have a food vendor permit now, but you'd also have to get, and the owner would have to get that permit as well. It's a dual process, but you're not precluded from being anywhere else.
But then, if I go somewhere else, I'm going to have to pay?
You're going to have to pay this money, yeah. Now, what you have now, again, is grandfathered, right, but that's the rule. And the research that was done, we wanted to make sure that it was not going to violate the principles of equal protection.
Okay, all right. You know, I very seldom come and complain about anything, but this is, this is my retirement here I'm dealing with, okay?
Anytime.
Sorry, you take your time.
Thank you, sir.
While we're here.
Do we have anyone else from the public that would like to talk during public hearing? The sign of sheet is for town council?
Oh, yeah. If you want to speak now.
This is about food trucks. Yep.
This is just for the food trucks.
This is just for the food trucks. Okay. Do we have anyone from the council that would like?
I have a, I just want to know what is defined as a food truck versus a food trailer. You originally didn't have trailers included, now you have trailers.
Can I ask, can I speak back? A trailer would be something like something that's towed there, but registered into the motor vehicle department, has wheels, mobile, has a license plate, and has, is enclosed. So, it has slats that can open up and a roof, things of that nature. So, it can be self-contained and it can be towed, but it has to be an enclosed roof of property of vehicle. And that was, that was, that was metamorphosized from this to that to that by a lot of discussion with Director of Public Health and zoning enforcement officer and the fire department. You're welcome.
Yes, ma'am.
No hot dog trucks. Hot dog trucks are like really, really popular today. They make a lot of money, they're great, people love them, and I just wonder why they have an umbrella over them and they're enclosed.
I don't make policy. I write the book. But, but, but the suggestion that was made to me, or the dictation that was made to me was to draft this such that they're mobile food trucks and trailers that are composed. I don't know why the hot dog carts accept are easier to proliferate than trucks that are registered like that, but I draft.
I can see, I can see that. So, the discussions that we had, Nancy, and it's a tough thing to do, trying to balance trying to do something new and different that's going to stimulate our economy and yet protect our brick and mortar restaurants. So, what we tried to focus on was the differentiation, the higher-end food trucks, and some of them were trailers, that vary upscale and additive as opposed to something that might seriously cannibalize all the delis and pizza places and lunch spots that we already have. So, a lot of the language, a lot of the discussions over the last few weeks have been about that balance. Where do we find that balance? And this is a good starting point. We know it's limited, but we did that on purpose because of the enforcement, because we don't have the experience to just give it a try. It's a starting point.
I have a comment.
Katie?
I have a question, Attorney DeBella. By definition, my definition, you could tell me what it means. A hot dog cart, a cart is something that one would push down the street. A trailer is just that. It's trailed behind a vehicle, and I realize they need to be closed, but I'm thinking of a hot dog cart with an umbrella, as was mentioned by Nancy, as the type of thing where you push it up and stop in front of a store and not, I don't think we have any of those.
But you have a little high trailer. That's the, you know, they're moved by a trailer.
If it's moved by a trailer and it's enclosed, as you just defined, then the food that it sells, whether it's hot dogs or not, isn't important, correct?
Right. The answer to your question, if I may, just a minute, to answer your question, is that the hot dog cart, yes, is pushable with like pretzel carts and things like that in the city, but it has to get there, and it has to have a license plate to get there.
Right.
But it's not enclosed, self-contained, and essentially a restaurant, not wheel, it's not.
Such as Con's Pond, the business there. That's enclosed, it's brought there, it's towed, et cetera. Okay.
Any other questions? Can you state your name for the record, please?
Yeah, my name's John R. Curry. I am a hot dog trailer, but it's not enclosed. Okay, so that's why I'm here. I want to know what, how you're defining that. I have the trailer, it's a seven-hundred-pound vehicle, and it is licensed, but it's Connecticut.
Does it have a license plate?
Yes, yes. It's registered. I pay taxes in New Milford, and I think it should still be added as part of this ordinance. Also, past history, and you said you don't have much experience with it. I have a lot of experience with food truck business, and I didn't buy a sixty to eighty to ninety thousand dollar vehicle because my overhead would be too high because of where you're planning these to go, are nightly events or part-time events. You're going to find the history of these food trucks are going to come in the first, second, or the third time, and then they're going to leave because they have to pay the fees for the town. They have an expensive overhead. They're not going to make the money that they think they're going to make, and when they don't, they're going to leave. And you're going to have a constant variety and flow of these new food trucks that think they're going to come in and make a lot of money. They don't and they leave. That's the history with it, unfortunately, because they have a big nut to pay, they have to bring three or four people with them. The price of their product is a little bit higher. So, the history of what I've seen with food trucks, and most of the time, people aren't happy with paying a nine-dollar grinder. So, what you're trying to do to help these businesses is going to create a habit with somebody that has a big expensive food truck. The reason that hot dog people buy trailers, because I have zero overhead. If I go down to this place, pay you guys, pay the town, pay my taxes, and make a hundred and fifty dollars that night, I'm a happy camper. I will never leave that place because that's great, that's a lot of money for one day's pay for little funds for like this gentleman here, retired people or whatever. So, I'd like to consider or have that hot dog cart, which to me, mine's a trailer, but if I, if I have to design a roof over it to pass the ordinance, I would do that, but it would still be a hot dog trailer that gets parked.
Is it, I mean, it's the definition you said, if trailer does count and it's got the overhead or any? It's, trailer is acceptable, it has a roof over, but it's not just.
So, I'll be popping with you guys. But again, my overhead and your fees would, to me, generate a profit wherever I went. And I'm excited that, you know, and I've lived in this town for thirty years, and it's exciting to see this happen, but if you're going to just exclude it or make it just for these big expensive trucks, you're not going to get what you think you are.
And as we said, it's not, it's a starting point at some point.
That you can have when we have a discussion for the ordinance itself? Anyone else who'd like to address the public hearing or food trucks? Anyone from council? Dr. Mullin?
I just want to get something clarified regarding, um, I guess it's on the second page. So, vending may be permitted on private property and on business premises. So, if the, if the property and the business owner are different people, will the food truck need to get permission from both?
Yes, they will. They have to be a host. You don't have to be the host and the property owner. A host would be somebody who asks the food truck to be there. And it could be the same, same matter. It doesn't have to be.
Could a property owner who owned, let's say, the mall where T. G. Maxx used to be, the New York State, could the property owner request that food truck there?
Yeah. Launches to a different piece from a fixed, uh, fixed.
So, he doesn't need a business owner?
No, because he would be the business owner.
Even though he doesn't own the business there, he's just property?
Right. He'd be the host as well.
All right.
Now, he's got to have facilities available, as you could see by the ordinance, toilet and hand washing facilities inside.
Any other questions? Anyone from the public? Yep.
I didn't want to know as deeply as I should have because I didn't know you were going to do this, but Greg Mullin, thirty-nine Meadowwood Drive. A couple of things I didn't like. I don't like it being at the whim of the mayor. I think that's not appropriate, but I think it needs to be written. I don't know if it's changed since I saw the draft, but I think the two fifty is a little close. Somebody pointed out if the Oddfellows wanted to have a beer truck or something, they couldn't do it there. They couldn't do fundraisers there. You know, I think as it's written, I think it's overkill. I think it really needs to be changed. And I can't give you ideas right now because I'm not prepared, but I just hope you don't vote on it as is. Thanks.
Anyone else? Mr. Winter?
Hi, Jeff Winter, twenty-two Maury Road. One thing that I have noticed repeatedly, at least in the media, is that this has been saying this is exactly like what they've done in Ridgefield. Well, this is not exactly like they've done in Ridgefield. Okay, well, I understand that, but that's what, that's the perception in the public, Randy. And that was actually stated, I believe, by the Economic Development Director and others, and that's what's in print. In Ridgefield, it was for one specific location, one brewery, and they got to use one truck, and that was it. Now, they grandfathered in two additional food trucks that had been at parts of their community for quite some time. So, I just want to make sure that we're clear on that, that this is not, that Ridgefield is very different than what's, than what's being asked here. And an example that Councilman Mullin just brought up was, okay, let's say someone in the plaza where Bad Dream Brewery is, if they want to have food trucks, are they too close to Wendy's? Are they too close to Villarina? Are they too close to Diner Lux? Does that exclude one brewery from the others or from another? And I think that we need to explore that before this comes out, because I think what we want to make sure of is that if we're doing this for breweries, that we don't immediately create a situation where it is, where we're creating unfair competition. Thank you.
Please, sir.
I don't want to, so wait, are we not done?
Only, yeah, I saw your hand up. So, I'm done.
No, go ahead. Oh, we're free.
I'm done. I'm done.
I want Karen to come up. I'm waiting for you to sit down.
Oh, that's fine. Yeah, okay.
So, two things, and I won't speak for our Economic Development Director, but if you look at the evolution, if you, if you look at the evolution of the ordinance, I believe it did start with one brewery in one location, and the council received a lot of feedback that that was unfair business practice and that we were showing favoritism. So, we took that, all those comments very seriously. So, I will let Karen speak to the, everybody knows our Economic Development Director, Karen Pollard, let her speak to the two hundred and fifty-feet issue specifically with the Staples Plaza.
Yes. First of all, I will reiterate that we did start with using Ridgefield's ordinance and then have made multiple changes based on feedback that we've already received. And I think we have a very strong ordinance to talk about tonight. I specifically did measure from Wendy's entrance and the Diner Lux entrance and found that two hundred and fifty feet still would allow Bad Dream Brewing to have a food truck that serviced their location if the owner of the center allows it. Again, there has to be the owner involvement and a host, so it's not as though it's a done deal just because the measurement is met. The map that has to be submitted has to show exactly where on the property that the food truck will be, and it is going to have to appear in that location time and time again as long as it's under that permit that's approved by the mayor, by the police chief, by the fire marshal, and by the health department. So, I think, again, we've taken those comments that we've heard and we've combined them into this ordinance rather thoughtfully and thoroughly, hoping to do what's right for the community.
One more comment? And we know the newspaper never misquotes anyone, so I would just ask everyone to listen carefully to Karen's words, and nothing against the newspaper, they're trying to get the word down as quickly as possible, but there really are good intentions here, but it's a balance. Not everybody is going to be happy. We've really worked hard on this, and kudos to Karen for pushing this ball forward.
Katie?
Karen, just want to reiterate for those that may not have been the other parts of this issue, that the ordinance, I did ask this of our town attorney, who would be, what entity, agency would be there to, in effect, be sure that all of the parameters were met? In other words, who's the enforcement agency? And that is the police department, correct, Attorney DeBella?
It is.
Yes, it is.
And as in other ordinances, they usually all run through the mayor's office, and the health department is involved here because of the fact it's food, which we would want our health department to be involved. And the fire department, I believe, is important so that they do have the proper fire containment and extinguishers, et cetera. So, I, someone had commented that there seemed to be an awful lot of people had to look this over, but there's absolutely a good reason for each one of those. And if the enforcement agency isn't involved in signing off on it, then there could be a lot of confusion should they be needed to come and enforce. Is that correct? We have gone through that?
Early in the process is the best way to go.
Right.
And really, we need each one of those sign-offs to make sure that the public is safe, that our community is safeguarded against unintended consequences.
Any other questions? Anyone else like to speak during the public hearing? Like to entertain a motion to close the public hearing? So, I have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The hearing is now closed, and just as a remembrance, the town council, if they so choose to approve the ordinance, will have forty-five days after the approval, the ordinance to be enacted. So, seeing as we are now seven-ten, I'd like to, all of us to rise for the pledge. Ms. Francis, can you lead us in the pledge, please?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Moment of silence for the men and women in the armed forces. Thank you.
I'm here to talk about the solar farm, Donaupi Candlelight Farms, Nancy Sidgee's, one ninety-five Candlewood Mountain Road in New Milford. So, I know you've heard me talk about things forever, but I just want to reiterate a few things on, maybe things the town could do a little better on. And the first thing I want to talk about is how this got through our departments with a plan of conservation and development. How did it get through farmland, and how did it get through planning? I can't figure it out. And I don't know whether we need a checks and balances system and all of this, but I was at these meetings, and the letters were written prior to any votes, and it happened the day of the meeting. The Economic Development Commission has now gone to say that they won't make any decisions on, on anything like the solar or any big things going on in town until the next meeting. So, people have time to digest it and talk about it. It doesn't just happen. And I hope this will happen at all the commissions because this was a huge mistake. And I've been at all the meetings. I know some of you have been to some, and some have been to others. I've been at all of them, and I was at all of them from the very beginning. Anyway, I'd like to say that the proposal wasn't approved by DEEP because it wasn't considered an economical source of renewable energy. That's the reason it wasn't. They weren't interested. And you can correct me if I'm wrong. I haven't been really up to date on a lot of this because everything has changed. Things change constantly when it comes to this solar because they don't have to go through the commissions, and they don't have to do what everybody else has to do. So, so if I'm wrong, it's because things change, and I don't know about it yet. And you can correct me if I'm wrong. It's okay. The application, the original application, was approved by Massachusetts and Rhode Island, not Connecticut. It didn't go forward, but it went forward in Connecticut, and Connecticut doesn't receive any of the energy. New Milford doesn't receive any of the energy from this. I don't, I don't get that. Vernal pools, vernal pools, they didn't find the vernal pools. The vernal pools were exposed. They weren't found, they were exposed by people other than the solar people. The visibility issue, which is really important to me because this is right next to my house. I see everything. I see the trucks going in. I see everything from my kitchen. So, the visibility issue went from not visible to barely visible, to visible at certain times, to they won't see it from their kitchen window, but I do. I see the trucks in the driveways that were put in, the driveway that was put in without anybody knowing it's there, and the trucks that made a lot of noise putting it in early, early, early in the morning. The people, and I called the town hall because two o'clock in the morning, people were going up on top of the mountain right past my house. Well, it's a little, you know, it's a quiet place, and when I see a car at two o'clock in the morning going up a hill where there's no homes, nothing, I'm concerned. I'm concerned, and I think anybody would be concerned. So, I think they could have let, they can let people know what they're doing and what to expect. Right now, our beautiful fields are filled with weeds. They look like they haven't been kept up. If you drive up there, it's like, oh, my gosh, what happened to this property? Last year at this time, it was manicured and beautiful. There's no reason, I mean, it's kind of indicative of what's going to happen here, but that's okay. I think you understand that. Most important, and people say, oh, Nancy, it's because it's in your backyard. It is in my backyard, and you know, I am concerned. No, it's not our property. I understand that. But our kids, I'm thinking about the top of that mountain in twenty years. They are using huge machinery, huge, huge stuff, banging these steel posts into the ground, into stone, into ledge. Do you really think in twenty years, someone's going to come out and take all of that out? I don't think so. I don't think, I don't think you could collect enough money to have that number sixty thousand solar panels and their big bars going into the ground, and they're going into the ground deep.
Nancy, you're at four minutes.
Okay, I'm almost done. I just don't want the mountain to become a gravesite solar panel. Okay? Thanks.
Is it 48 Candlewood Shore? I can't quite read your name here, I'm sorry.
That's part of the town.
Okay.
It's Letya Tia.
Thank you.
I don't know why my parents did that to me.
They loved you a lot.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Letya Tia. I live at 48 Candlewood Shore. I'm just a short distance from where the solar farm will be. I will not see it from my kitchen. I will likely not see it from my driveway, but I am on, on the lake and I will likely see it as I go past your property and certainly from the lake, based on what I've heard. I understand that Candlewood Solar is a wholly owned subsidiary of Amoresco, which is a Delaware corporation, and that it's worth just under a billion dollars, which is, I think, enough money to do all the right research, all the right work, put things up and take them down. That's just my opinion. I understand that they sent a representative here last week to speak to the town council and to say that they had a good deal for New Milford. I have never understood how this was a good deal for New Milford, but I, I had hoped that the council and everyone else involved would understand that. They haven't quantified, as far as I know, how many jobs will be created and whether those will be long lasting jobs to the benefit of our community in the long term. I don't know about the temporary jobs, whether they provide the right kind of security and benefits, whether they're specialized jobs that bring people from the outside in, which in my mind might be a benefit to us because they might see how great our community is and want to buy a home here and stay here. And so to some extent, that's a benefit, but I don't know that that's actually the way it's happening. I don't know anything about the job structure and how, how it benefits our community outside of the fact that we have this enormous operation happening in our backyards. I don't know that there's a value to our properties at all. How is my property value going to be affected? Is it going to go up or down or stay neutral based on this? I would say that if you can see those panels, it will affect my property values negatively. That's just, you know, that's just a foregone conclusion. I don't know that this company really cares about Candlewood Lake. My family and I came here because of the lake. My son married a girl who grew up on Candlewood Lake. And my husband, who is a Jersey boy and would never leave the state of New Jersey, was convinced to come here and he fell in love with Candlewood Lake, which, my God, his family doesn't understand. We built a house here because we love this lake. And I would hate to see our values, not just our values, but our values destroyed or damaged or hurt in any way because of this proposal. So, you know, I don't know how it's going to affect erosion. I trust that all the right minds have looked at it. But just from a simple aesthetic standpoint, if it damages the beauty of the mountain then, or impacts it negatively, then I think it's, it's not a great idea. I understand that they submitted two storm worn, two storm water management plans, English is my second language, that's a lot of words, to DEEP. And both plans were rejected and that they came here and asked New Milford to help them fix their application. I thought that was fake news, and I hope it is, because I can't imagine that a company with those resources would not be able to do everything they needed to do in advance and to supply everything they needed to supply to get the right approvals, and especially at this late a date. I didn't understand that. So anyway, long story short, I'm concerned. I'm concerned about, you know, all the things that I have mentioned, and I'm concerned that Amoresco doesn't have the expertise necessary to execute this project properly and not harm our town. Thank you for your time.
Are you ready? Ted Solow, speak, please.
He spoke during the food truck. He's a food truck guy. He's gone. Cross him off.
Next. Cross him off. Okay. We're back to 48 Candlewood Shore. Come on down.
Mayor and members of the town council, that was my lovely wife, and it was my parents who gave me the last name that you can't pronounce. Her parents who gave me the first name that you can't pronounce. And she decided to marry me a long time ago in a galaxy far away.
Well, it's had a good thing or a bad thing.
No comment. And my attorney is right here to back me up. My name is Mike Attia. I live at 48 Candlewood Shore in New Milford. My home is on Candlewood Lake and will be just a short distance from the proposed solar farm. I attended the Connecticut's Siding Committee meeting where they approved the developers' request to waive critical environmental assessments required by law. In addition, at a meeting of the New Milford Town Council way back in early 2017, the council approved the pilot project related to the solar farm. We've heard the facts, some of the facts Nancy mentioned, my wife mentioned. They're cutting 60 acres of trees, 15,000 of them, and replaced them with, I thought 6,000 solar panels. I don't know if it's 60,000, but it's a lot, as you know. With all the resulting benefits flowing right out of the state of Connecticut up to Massachusetts, the member of the, you know, home of the Red Sox, and I really hate the Red Sox. So here's my point. When my wife and I built our home in New Milford in 2015, we needed to comply with significant rules and regulations required by the New Milford Department of Inland Wetlands, very difficult, the mandated shoreline management plan, and requirements of first light. In addition, to ensure we complied with those regulations, we had to post a significant bond with the town of New Milford. Among the experts we were required to hire were an arborist to approve any tree we wanted to remove, a landscape architect to design a landscaping plan that complied with the rules and regulations of the organization's reference, and a certified civil engineer to design the site plan. Every single decision we made with respect to these areas and all of the resulting plans needed to be approved by the town of New Milford. All of this for constructing a house on Candlewood Lake. So here's my point. Why is it that a project clear cutting 60 acres and 15,000 trees and installing 60,000 solar panels so close to Candlewood Lake would not need to provide significantly more information, studies, guarantees, and bonds than has been provided to date? The town council, I respectfully request the town council demands such information, or reverse the decision made at the meeting in 2017. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lisa, please.
Sorry, Lou?
CMR, 178, 170, oh, my goodness.
I'm Lisa Ostrow. I live at 175 Candlewood Mountain Road. I probably won't say it as nicely as you did. Forgive me for that. We all know that so far, no storm water management plan submitted by Candlewood Solar has received approval from the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. Candlewood Solar is now asking the town to cooperate with them and help them find a plan that will work. How new at this are they? Almost all of their previous or current projects are on open land or brownfields where they probably should be. Clear cutting and stumping a mountain is clearly not what they excel at, and they do not seem to have the expertise to figure out how to adequately solve the erosion issue. This erosion can potentially cause harm to property owners and most importantly, to Candlewood Lake. Why would any, anyone take those risks when so much is at stake here? It's not the town's job to write the application for Candlewood Solar. And I thank the town and the town council and the mayor for protecting the town and residents, some of who perhaps don't fully understand how dangerous Candlewood Solar could be. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you, Lisa.
John Autry, please.
He was food truck, Walter. He was gone. Food truck, on.
Cross him off. I guess I should get to know more people here.
So did you get me going on vacation?
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the town council, Mayor Bass. I'm here tonight, my name is Leva Ferment, 60 Colonial Ridge, Gaylordsville. I'm here tonight speaking on my own behalf as a resident and a taxpayer of New Milford. And I just wanted to address a few things. I happened to have been here last meeting when the representatives from Candlewood Solar came and asked the town to fix their application. And I wanted to address some of the comments they made, particularly things in reference to the pilot agreement that is out there. I'm going to start with decommissioning, which is a really very, very big issue. This is a huge project. This is not solar panels on the roof of a building. This is not a little one acre solar farm. This is a huge enterprise. You know, the state of New York actually publishes a booklet for municipalities so that they can start learning how to handle solar applications and solar decommissioning. It's a small booklet. It's six pages, mayor, I'll forward it to you and you can circulate it among the council members. And they give some pretty good advice for towns. They have an example in there. They're talking about a 2 megawatt plant. This is 20, so everything gets multiplied 10 times. And they're using a Massachusetts plant. And the booklet actually says that costs can vary from state to state and obviously from terrain to terrain, some are flat. This is a forest that's been destroyed and decimated. And they're estimating $90,000 for a 2 megawatt plant. So let's multiply that by 10, and that's 90,000, 900,000, or a million dollars. This number is adjusted for inflation for 20 years. So that's just something to think about. They give some suggestions to towns that they should perhaps have the developer have an escrow fund, and every year they put money into that fund so that you know as a town, 20 years from now, there's the money for the decommissioning plan. It's kind of interesting, the Candlewood Solar application is petition number 1312 in front of the Siding Council. Petition number 1313 happens to be from a company, DWW Solar Two LLC, which I'm sure is some subsidiary of some other corporations, called Tobacco Valley Solar. Happens to be in Simsbury, Connecticut, where my brother happens to live. I just found this out the other day. Because he told me they're putting a solar plant right next door to where I live. He's in a large complex in an independent housing unit, and he's now at the forest and woods. He's being surrounded. So I'm going to actually take a ride out there this week, and I'll come back and tell you what the construction looks like and sounds like. But anyway, that plant actually has a decommissioning plan. They actually submitted six or seven pages of a decommissioning plan. And they talk about, "The estimated cost of decommissioning shall be funded in equal annual installments over the first 10 years of the project." And after 15 years of the project, they're going to go back and relook at the cost of decommissioning and then see if they have to add any more money in there. That's just one example. Other examples would be posting surety bonds, letters of credit, et cetera, et cetera. So I just found that interesting, wanted to pass it on. So let's talk about taxes, because the big thing that they were talking about was the 2.7 million dollars the town would receive in taxes. Well, the estimate that's out there is about $40 million to construct this plant. There's actually numbers for other plants that I've seen, 35, 40, so that's, that's, you know, pretty close to the ballpark. So if they were to pay full taxes, the full mill rate, that'd be about, what, $780,000 a year, $790,000. I'm not great with mill rates and stuff, but that's a lot of money a year. The pilot for 20 years gives us 2.7 million dollars. Another interesting thing I found is that something called the purchase power agreement that they have to sign, Tom, you probably know more than I do about this stuff. So they had...
If I could ask a question? So 2.7 over 20 is how much annually versus the annual 780?
Well, the first payment was...
135.
First payment, year one, was 75,000, and then by year 20, because it escalates, would be 200,000.
Thank you.
So this purchase power agreement with Eversource, a Massachusetts based company, Unitel, a Massachusetts based company, and I can't remember the third company, but there are companies all put together. And in their application, they said they were in negotiations with the town, because this was going back into 2016, they were starting this. And a question in the application said, "Describe the role of the federal protection, production tax credit, or investment tax credit, or other incentives on the financing of the project." And this is a direct quote from that application. The investment tax credit, whoops, that's not the quote I wanted to read you. Okay. No, but they, it talked about what arrangements they were doing with the town. And the quote there was similar, and I will send you the actual citation and bring it to the next meeting, that they're in negotiations with the town and they're prepared to pay $250,000 annually or more per year. So that, ladies and gentlemen, will, would more than double what they've offered to pay. So they walked in expecting to pay that, and if someone had done their homework and seen the paperwork behind them, the paper trail, they would have known that.
Leva, I've given you over four minutes so far.
Okay.
Counselor.
Okay. Well, basically, those were the two things that I wanted to talk about tonight, were the taxes and the decommissioning. And again, I want to reiterate what Lisa said, the residents of New Milford, those who are aware of the solar plant, its impacts, not just on the neighborhood, but on the whole town, are deeply appreciative to the town council and the mayor's office for taking the lead on this with the DEP and having the application reviewed to make sure that the town will be safe and sound. Thank you.
Thank you, Leva. Jeff Winter, please.
Wait, you want a word? No, it's food truck, sorry. Karen, please.
Hi, Jeff, excuse me, Jeff Winter-Mori wrote, I apologize for my voice this evening. I'm here to ask you to do some careful consideration regarding the second phase of the Riverfront Revitalization Committee. Riverfront revitalization is a very serious and important issue and one that needs to be taken very seriously. This committee, though, in its current and previous state, has really not done that. They have repeatedly held meetings in secret. They have repeatedly not reported on those meetings. They have not published their agendas properly, and that is holding a meeting in secret. In fact, not only were they not reported properly, they weren't reported until Freedom of Information Act request was filed months later. It's not important, for instance, that minutes be filed right away. No one has a problem with that. When it's six months late, that's a problem. When agendas are filed six months late, that's a real problem. And when neither is filed, that meeting is held completely in the dark. The chairman of this committee knows all too well what those rules are, and yet it was like pulling teeth to get those things filed with the town clerk. How are the people of this town supposed to have full confidence that the way this committee is made up right now is actually going to function properly, when it clearly has not functioned properly in the past? This committee even filed to take part as a town agency and on behalf of the town and actually even as part of the Economic Development, I believe, Corporation, and on behalf of the mayor's office for what was held as the greatest of all town days. And that was filed with the Park and Rec Commission. However, they filed to do so for an event in May when all of their terms expired prior to that event. So not only were none of the members actually functioning as members of this government, but they were taking on, you know, responsibilities that they did not have. So I guess part of... So I guess part of me is very curious to find out, did the town cover any expenses for this committee that was, or commission that was no longer valid? Do we have any assurance that they will be transparent? I mean, they even have money for someone to take their minutes and file their agendas, but they don't do it. Why is that? I thought that you ran on transparency. This is blatant, blatantly non-transparent. This, of course, as you know, is not the only committee that even members of this town council are on, that has failed repeatedly to file agendas and to file minutes. And when that happens, you are holding meetings in the dark. So before I think that this committee gets voted on, I think it should be considered as whether or not the membership should change, and it should change for people that have a serious bent for Riverfront revitalization, not just holding festivals, but real revitalization to help the economy of this town and the people of this town. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Chris Cosgrove, please.
Chris Cosgrove, 143 Sunny Valley Road. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Town Council. A couple things I'd like to give you feedback on. One is the security changes at Lynn Demming Park. I think we've got enough into the season now where we can safely say that these upgrades have really done their job. I think the difference at Lynn Demming between this year and last year have been tremendous. And so I'd like to thank the mayor for getting involved during the fiascos of last year, personally at the park, working and finding ways to solve this and figuring out how to fund them as well. As a member of the Board of Finance, I know we gave some scrutiny to the fact that we're using landfill settlement money for this, and I think it was the right way to finance it. And I think now it was a wise use of taxpayer funds to protect what really what is the crown jewel of our park system here in town. So thank you all for doing that. And the other thing I wanted to give some feedback on is the community policing program that's been happening. I think that came around through some grant money that came in. And, you know, I think it's still early on, but from what I've seen so far, it's a great program. Interaction with our police department, with the citizens, especially the youth of the community, with all the challenges that our youth have today, getting personal interaction with our police is a great thing. So I certainly commend Chief Sarudo for implementing this program. I really look forward to when it's come to an end to understand maybe some metrics on some tangible and intangible benefits from it. And maybe, you know, if the grant money doesn't come back, if it's, there's enough benefit there, we find a way to fund it permanently going forward. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff, speak under the leash, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next, mayor's comments. I'll be pretty brief. First, I'd like to congratulate our 16-U baseball program, our state champions. So congratulations to the coaches, the players, and the team for a great job. I'd also like to congratulate our 12-U Cyclones, who are runners-up in the Cal Ripken Regional Tournament. The winner of that would have went to the World Series, well, is going to the World Series, in Missouri, and they missed it by one game, but they did great. So congratulations to them. Also, for those that haven't seen, Water Witch got their hook-and-ladder truck, and it's beautiful. So I'd like to thank, obviously, the grant funding, FEMA grant that we received, also the town council and Board of Finance for them allowing for us to use funding to completely pay for this hook-and-ladder, and I think it's something that's already been used already. So I think that's wonderful. So I can't thank the people enough, and also thank Water Witch and all our fire departments and first responders for what they do each and every day. Also, it was just talked about before, I did check our different parks during this weekend. On Lynn Demming, a lot of the residents, as I was walking the beach, were very happy with the new security enhancements that we have there, and just wanted to bring that back to the council and let them know that they're happy. I did get some concerned residents over the weekend that were talking about the additional litter, littering on some of our roadway systems, off our roadway systems and into our, to our rivers. So I will be meeting with Eversource this weekend, this week, as well as our New Milford Police Department, DEEP, and we're going to come up with a solution to help with this that could result in a safety issue as well as harm our environment. So we're going to do what we can do to kind of mitigate that problem. Also, would like to thank the McCarthy Observatory. They had an Apollo 50th celebration. Went down, it was pretty amazing, and one of the most amazing things was they chalked out the actual size of the rocket that lifted the Apollo in the school parking lot, and it was big, let me tell you. And I'd like to just thank them. They have moon rocks that you could go and look at a microscope that the hospital gave to the observatory, and just what a true asset we have in the town as an observatory like that, so I thought it was great. And lastly, just can't thank all the volunteers enough for what they do each and every day, and also all the new events and events that we do have going on in the green and everywhere. I'm hearing from our constituency that they're excited about that and the wonderful assets that we have, whether you're walking, you know, in our walks or in our, in our beautiful lakes. We're just walking downtown and enjoying the block party that we just had on Friday and the movies at night. Just wonderful to see, and it just makes our town such a blessed town, and I can't thank volunteers enough. So that being said, I'd like to move on next. Katie, to-
I'd like to move to add an item to the agenda. Item would be 5D to include a temporary committee for recycling. Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion to adding this on the agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you. Our consent agenda, I move to approve all items on the consent agenda, which would be 4A, prior minutes, 4B, the donation of $500 from the Women's Club of Greater New Milford for the Parks and Recreation.
Second.
Any discussion on the consent agenda? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item 5A, moved for the creation of the Old Boardman Bridge Committee, a temporary committee.
Dr. Mullin? Katie?
I'm sorry. Say to him.
What's the purpose of this committee?
The committee, this is the Old Boardman Bridge Committee that we've had, but we're turning it, this will be Committee Two, temporary.
So it's trying to provide funding sources-
Oh, you mean, what's the whole purpose of the committee? Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you meant the timing of, oh, oh. The purpose was to investigate, well, I'm on it, I can tell you. To investigate options for rehabilitation so the bridge could be used in some manner, never to travel, of course, with cars, but to be made so that you could travel, walk across it to go over towards Sagamato from the parking lot, be used for wedding pictures such as people do on the Lover's Leap Bridge.
Any other discussion?
So I have a question. So that sounds similar to the Northville One Room Schoolhouse Committee. Am I wrong?
Has nothing to do with the school.
No, I understand they have nothing to do with one another, but in terms of taking a structure in town that we want to preserve and protect and have a community focused on the efforts, isn't it similar to the One Room Schoolhouse Committee in that regard?
Only in that I would say that the scope of what it will cost to do any rehabilitation of Boardman Bridge to actually be used is much greater than-
Understood, but the intent is, just for my own identification, because I wasn't here when those were started, so the intent, though, is that preserving historic landmarks and rehabilitating them for purposes.
Yes, yeah, and that, the intention is similar.
Okay.
Yeah, sure.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item 5B, move to take action and create a Riverfront Revitalization Committee Two.
Second.
Any discussion? Dr. Mullin?
Just a few questions about things that were raised. When was this committee previously, what was the timeframe for the previous committee? I guess it was Committee One.
So the previous committee expired on 5, I believe it was 5-
27.
5/20. So when this came on, Dr. Mullin, when I saw this, I saw the expiration. So I asked attorney DeBella, you know, we have a committee that has expired, how do we, how do we make it whole? How does this work? What can we do? Are there minutes or there meetings that are in the gap between now and when this, when this committee expired? And if so, how can we make it whole? So attorney DeBella advised me that what can happen is when this committee gets reappointed, what they can do is go through their old minutes, make motions to the one, motions that they made before, approve them, and then we're whole. Am I correct, attorney DeBella?
Yeah, they have to discuss it, too.
Yep.
Motion, of course, just like the Genova.
Perfect.
So did they hold meetings between May 20th and now?
Katie?
No, we did not.
Okay. Well, another issue was raised, do they have money for a recording secretary?
No. I don't think so right now. We have to, we'd have to approve that, don't you agree?
We'd have to approve that.
So the previous committee had no money for a recording secretary?
They did.
They did?
We did give, we gave them-
I want to say the first iteration did, so that was not the last one, but maybe the top before, but later you can actually tell us, she's right here.
Can I help you?
Yes, please.
Yes, please.
Thank you. We had a secretary for a while, there were, there were issues where she was unable to attend certain meetings, and so she was not able to take the minutes. So it fell to committee members to take care of that.
So we had money for a recording secretary? Yes, no?
Yes, Dr. Mullin, we did, yes.
Good. That was my question.
And I'm giving you the answer.
Were agendas filed on time prior to the meeting?
Yes, Dr. Mullin, every meeting.
Okay.
So you could point out to a meeting-
Were minutes filed on a timely basis?
Most, for the most part, yes. There were times where it was several days late, maybe week late, but for the most part, it was made to do that.
So not months late, as was previously stated in public comment?
What I did discover when I was going through the minutes, because on a periodic basis, I kind of go through to make sure that we're kept up, there were some minutes that the town clerk had not filed. They had been sent to them. I have, if you'd like, screenshots of the email that was sent to them. They neglect, they did receive them, but they neglected to post them in the online. They did have a hand copy.
Did the town cover any expenses for the goat event that the Riverfront Revitalization Committee ran?
No.
Initially, the Riverfront Committee was going to co-sponsor that with them, and then our expenses would have been kept separately if we had had any. But due to just a lack of timing, we were going through the whole RFP thing and starting out with the new consultants, we decided that better we put our time towards that than the festivals. So, you know, I informed the AGs, who are the owners of Goat Boy Soap, that we would not be co-sponsoring or putting on any simultaneous activities. The intent was maybe we would sponsor a kayak trip or something like that, but that did not happen.
Any other discussion?
I'd say I have one quick question. Leva, I see, you know, there's some Democrats and Republicans on this committee.
Yes.
They're basically all the same as the previous committee, correct?
Yeah, except Richard Shipple is a new member, is an alternate.
Mr. Wargo, yourself.
Correct.
People have high standards and character, correct?
I believe so, sir, yes.
So there was no meetings done in secret, undercover, or anything like that?
Not that I know of.
I just want to make it clear, I mean, some of these people I know personally, and it seems like some character, you know, whatever, secret meetings are going on and stuff. That doesn't happen, correct?
No.
Thank you.
I mean, there may be some confusion in some people's mind because there's a Riverfront Revitalization Committee, and then there's the Bar Grant Steering Committee. And as you know, you appointed the Bar Grant Steering Committee to conform with the state's requirement to have such a committee for the grant that we received. So, you know, the agendas were posted separately-
Right.
-for each of those committees, but no, there were no secret meetings that I know of.
And all these people are volunteers, taking time out of their day for doing it, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
So are you, so in that gap since May to now, are you saying, first of all, backup, Bar Grant Steering Committee, same people is on the Riverfront?
Correct, the town council, because we, because those people had started working on the project, and the council felt it best to have the same people continue.
Gotcha. Okay, so in that gap between the Riverfront Committee expiring and today, the Bar Grant Steering Committee was still in full force and effect and meeting.
Exactly, yes, ma'am.
So that might be causing the confusion.
Might.
Okay, I get what you're saying. Got it.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you.
And the additional item that's added is the Recycling Committee.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Leva. Which will be a temporary committee also.
It's just renaming, re-upping the same people that are on that committee?
Would you like to know the-
Yes, could you read the names?
Yes, because it's not on our agenda.
Catherine Francis, Jay Lewin, Frank Wargo, Barbara Wolf, and we have a vacancy, an R vacancy.
Any other discussion? Dr. Mullin?
What's the purpose of this committee?
We were a monthly committee met for several years, and then once, I guess it was probably about almost two years ago, we decided we would only meet quarterly just to review what was going on at the recycling center, which we have done. And then Mr. Hannah came to take over, and we had, we've had two meetings, I think. One for sure, I can remember. We haven't had one lately because we haven't really had any, anything in particular to meet about.
But we will need to re-up these because of the recycling fees now, being part of HRRA, the new, the company that HRRA uses for recycling, there's going to be a dramatic rise in the cost because China now is not allowing for recyclables anymore. So there's going to be some definite volatility.
There is.
So I thought it was important to reconstitute this so that we can keep an eye on that volatility.
Is that a seven-member committee like anything else, but we don't-
It is a five-member committee as it exists now.
Looking for more people?
I think they've been doing great as they are, so-
I learned three names.
Catherine Francis, Jay Lewin, Frank Wargo, Barbara Wolf.
There's one alternate, so if someone's interested in recycling, that'd be great.
The same people, there is a vacancy because Beth Falter could not continue. We've all been from the original committee, and we just all decided to stay, so.
Any other discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so we've now created these temporary committees, and now we need to, I will move to approve the appointments of the people on these three temporary committees. That would be the Old Boardman Bridge Committee Two, Riverfront Revitalization Committee Two, and the Recycling Committee, doesn't have a two, but-
Can you, Katie, can you read the names for the public?
I certainly would.
They'll be watching as well, and then we'll give it to Elaine.
Okay. Riverfront Revitalization Committee Two, seven members, two alternates, Julie K. Bailey, Richard Rosellio, Christopher Gardner, Lucy Wildrick, Frank Wargo, Leva Fermin, and Richard Shipple. Their terms, all of those people, is July 22, 2019 through January 21, 2020. Old Boardman Bridge Committee Two, five members, two alternates, Catherine Francis, Robert Burkhart, Jeremy Rummen, Joe Coranta, William Devlin, Walter Bayer, and Ron Suresha. Again, July 22, 2019 through January 21, 2020. Recycling Committee, Catherine Francis, Jay Lewin, Frank Wargo, Barbara Wolf. Term the same from July 22, 2019 through January 21, 2020.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions?
Okay.
Thank you.
Item number six, Board of Education, move to approve the Board of Education request to approve expenditures of $96,500- to approve expenditures of $96,511 from their capital reserve for the purchase of 88 Chromebooks, 150 Chromebooks for the high school, 88 for Saranope, uh, Scatacoke, excuse me, and $44,151 for the Department of Instruction capital for that total, 96,511.
And this is coming out of the Board of Education's capital reserve account? As you can see, the letter that was given by David Lawson, the chairperson, and do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Okay, now we have a second. I move to send the prior approval on to the Board of Finance for approval.
Now be sending this to the Board of Finance for their approval.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item 6B, discussion with the Board of Ed and the town looking collaboratively on some joint capital projects, an informal discussion.
So, just basically for the councils, just kind of updating, as you know, we've been working with the, the Board of Ed for quite some time, both on capital items, whether it be roofs, oil tanks, and obviously we want to continue with that and see if there's other items that we can jointly maybe do together. I've talked with Chairman Lawson previously, also talked to their facilities chairman as well, and there may be opportunities that we can uncover that will save the taxpayers money. One, for instance, is as we're doing our road projects, there's also some capital these be doing for some driveways, so as we all know, driveways are asphalt too, so maybe there's a way that we can ride off of a town bid for asphalt onto the Board of Ed, thus saving money. So we're going to be looking at different scenarios for that.
Can you do my driveway too?
I'll, I'll be bringing back more information at our August meeting, so I just wanted to update the council, let them know that working together with the Board of Ed, there may be some cost savings for us.
Very happy to hear that.
Yep, and the Board of Ed as well.
That's a great idea.
Any questions for Mr. Lawson or Ms. McInerney who's here tonight?
No, but you did mention...
Dr. Mullin?
Operations chairs.
Oh, there's Wendy back there. Oh, Wendy, oh, Wendy also, real quick.
Yeah.
Is there any other life savings?
What do you mean, on the collaboration case?
Yeah, like the mayor said, we got a meeting, my gosh, over here now, and this is one of the things that rainstorming came across, well, we need this parking lot fixed up on the road, things of that nature, community playground, but I anticipate meeting with the mayor and our finance directors, and hopefully we can see what we can come up with and if it's acceptable to everybody, but it is those types of things that we're looking at.
Awesome. Wendy, did you have something to, you raised a...
Well, just to piggyback on that, there have been conversations for quite some time on this, and we felt that, you know, when we come to the town council with a list for capital reserve, maybe there's an opportunity to take that line item and reduce it, we know it has to be done, but if we can partner with the town and reduce the bill, we're all saving money. So we have our soft capital in our budget, we have our hard capital that should come to the capital reserve, we also have other capital projects that haven't even hit the list yet because, quite frankly, they're expensive, so if you look at our Page 70 of our budget, you'll see our five-year capital plan, which is constantly being revised, however, some of those items haven't even hit that list because it's time for us to sit down and really see what we need, what's out there, and how we can save some money doing it together.
Thank you. Dr. Mullin?
My question was for Randy. About, I'm going to say this, six or eight years ago, a proposal had come before town council that was initially approved and then we had to rescind, and it was about purchasing town and Board of Ed together, and there was something concerning state regulations that didn't allow us to do that now.
There is.
Do you recall what I'm referring to?
I do recall.
All right, so this...
In the research of my mind, I recall it.
This is different than that issue?
Yeah, I don't think there's any...
Randy? Yes?
I don't think there's any purchasing decision that would be made, it's just that the Board of Ed or the town council wouldn't approve in New York, is that correct? In other words, this committee would not be a purchasing authority?
No.
It would be a consultant authority.
If it come, if the proposals would come to...
Then there'd be no violation of space, of space that in the Board of Finance.
And what Dr. Mullin was referring to, because some of us have been around, is the ordinance that we were extorting about just that, the purchasing.
Yeah, I think I vetoed that then.
You did.
You approved it first and then you...
I truly didn't veto it.
It was withdrawn quickly, Dr. Mullin, so...
Because that's...
You said it might have finished it quickly.
So, but that's different, Randy, this is more of a teaming up of ideas, identifying what the projects are, identifying to the public and to all of us what the larger items are, and if there's a way to save money, to take a look at how we do that, and also equip with some of these projects, such as asphalt, for example, at, you know, some of the schools that we talked about, doing parking lots, and there's not, the council did that, so it's not the direct, we wouldn't be the purchasing authority.
Right, as a matter of fact, I think I talked to Bill on that.
You did?
Yep.
You did, I was, I was...
And in fact, I vetoed that, not Bill.
Um...
No, as a matter of fact, Dr. Mullin changed it, and then we both vetoed it. It would, it would...
My point is this, there was a time when the town council approved something, and then at the next meeting, we had to rescind what we approved, so I just want to make sure we're not treading in that area now.
Yeah.
Okay?
Great, thank you.
It's just a matter of collective purchasing.
Correct.
Yeah.
Any other, any other questions? Okay.
Good.
All right. Next, economic development?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, I need...
Thank you.
Item seven, this is our public hearing that we had earlier on the motion, I'll make a motion to move forward on the food truck ordinance.
Second.
Any discussion on the ordinance? Walter?
As Nancy pointed out, you know, it's, it's a, it's a starting point, so, hey, let's do it.
Dr. Mullin?
Just want clarification, if we approve this tonight, what happens next? Can we go through the sequence?
Sure.
Sure. It would be published in a newspaper, of course, as I have a normal ordinance, it becomes effective on the 21st day following publication. In order for someone to, to get this food vendor's license, which is different than the vendor's license, they also would have to have a vendor's license. In other words, the, the trucks, food truck would have to have a vendor's license, but the food vendor's license, the additional one that's covered by this quarter, has to be by the property owner. There has to be, and then that would have to be presented by the mayor, it has to be, the truck has to be inspected or hold with a valid current certificate, and then the chief of police would also sign off on a sketch, which has to be presented concerning the location of the vehicle, and that's the process that would be followed by...
Quick plan, yes.
Yeah, the, the, the fire, fire marshal has to...
Can I add to that?
Yeah.
So, in that approval from the health department, it's of no, since this has been a discussion point, that the health department has a pre-inspection and a post-inspection, so lots of safeguards.
Yeah, that's required by the public health code, I have no jurisdiction with the public health in any way.
But Dr. Mullin was asking about the process, I just want to make sure that's clear to everybody.
Right, it has to go through the health department, so, but that's, that's nothing you can legislate.
And also the, Randy, for edification for everyone, the host, right, so that's the property owner.
Property owner, or the, the, the business that, that hosts.
Correct.
And the property owner.
Correct. Has to be, their zoning and everything else has to be up to date?
Yeah, although, they cannot be a violation of any regulation.
Yep.
Health code, zoning, inland building, or...
Taxes, absolutely.
Taxes have to be paid, and because the fact is, is that, is that it's really the grace of the town that they're getting this license, which is not as a mayor is right.
Okay, so the motion is...
I think there's more questions.
I'm sorry, Peter, I didn't see your hand. Go right ahead.
I, I guess I have a concern about one of the gentlemen speaking about, he felt there were certain restrictions on what he was able to basically tow, and that he had to put a roof over. Here's my question, we want to change this ordinance, what's the procedure, Randy?
Just like, just like you're not...
So I have to have another...
Process, a public hearing.
Another public hearing about concerning this, this is, when we change the wording and wordsmithing and all?
Yeah, even, even if it's, if it's not significant, like you get some time from some towns, well, we can just do this, that's with the entire process.
Right. All right, thank you.
Mike?
You know, I'll put a point on this, you know, if, if people are saying, well, this isn't fair, this isn't... We came in here originally and had an ordinance made for one business owner, and then someone says, well, you know, we're not copying Ridgefield because they have it just for one business owner, but we had people come in and say, well, that's not fair, I mean, in my mind, let's just get this thing in the books, we can revisit it, just like you said, we have a public hearing, talk about it, but we need to stop, we need to try, because we're never going to please everybody, there's just no physical popular way to please everyone in this town. So we've done some work, we seem like we've gotten the best of both worlds, and it seems like it's just time to either move forward or not move forward.
Okay.
I just want to make a statement because I think one of the misconceptions throughout this process has been that there are parks, town parks, where the vendor who's there has a permit from the town in New Milford, such as at Lindemming, Con's Pond, and they are not affected in their current operation, correct, Attorney DeBella?
It is, the language in the ordinance that was, that Doug, the council...
But they're not adversely affected by this ordinance?
No, this language, this language specifically explicitly states that, that notwithstanding anything in this ordinance, the provision shall not preclude or prohibit, nor prohibit, the continued operation of a legally permitted and licensed food truck vendor in active and continuous lawful operation prior to the...
And when those permits come up for bid again in the next year, that will move forward the same way they've always moved forward, so we don't want to threaten what they're doing, just want to make that clear.
And that's the language that the council...
And Dr. Mullin would know this goes in front of the parking rec, it goes out there in bidding process for town property, so this has nothing to do with them or affects them whatsoever.
Right. The town is not a host.
Because the parking rec commission is the exclusive, has the exclusive jurisdiction of the rules and regulations.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so the motion is as follows, move the proposed food vending truck ordinance, revision seven, dated July 22nd, 2019, be adopted and made part of the New Milford Code of Ordinances at Chapter 15, Article 2, Section 15-16, to take effect on the 21st day after publication of adoption.
Second.
Any other discussion on the motion?
I have one question. Attorney DeBella, sorry to keep exercising here. When this is passed now, when we vote on this, I realize it takes effect in 21 days, can applications be submitted during that time?
Certainly, to the effect of...
It's a viable document, or ordinance?
Yes, it can act on, the application can be filed, it can be issued, subject to the effective date of this ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
But also, there is still an ordinance, I mean, it's still, you're allowed to have a food truck a certain number of times per year as a special event.
Yeah, there's another, there's another...
So they want to have a food truck next weekend, even, you know, within that, they could apply for a special event, that food truck could be there next weekend, and then start the process down.
They could use their four, one of their four, I believe, four grace, grace times.
Four per year.
Right.
So they, in effect...
Yeah, nobody's going to hear about it. So within this 21 days, they can get their inspections, they can get everything done, so on the 20, on the 22nd day, the hammer comes down, they can be in that parking lot somewhere.
But they can be in it part ahead of time, they use one of the...
If they use one of the days, but I'm just saying, so it doesn't preclude them from having their inspections, getting sign offs as per the day, in anticipation, anticipation, all of that can be done.
Not to cloud the waters, but for those that are watching tonight on TV, you have the special provision, that doesn't grandfather you in to the provisions of this new ordinance, you got to do both.
Right, exactly.
Okay, so, does everybody...
All right. Any, any other discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstention? Thank you.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Eight, ten.
Opposed? Thank you. Thank you, everybody.